Good evening. I'd like to call the 38th meeting of the Mayor and City Council on October 11, 2003 to order. Mayor Mo will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman DeWalt?
Here.
Councilman Cole?
Here.
Councilman Sidmore?
Here.
Councilman Mitchell?
Here.
President Smith?
Here.
Mayor Mo?
Alright. Next on the agenda is the Laurel Citizens University 2023 graduation. Ms. Cornwall, you have the floor.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to congratulate the second graduating class of the Laurel Citizens University. These graduates participated in eight sessions to learn about how the city government functions through finances, day-to-day operations, current projects and services that are provided to the community. We appreciate their attendance in the program and their feedback along the way to departments regarding the city's programs and services. Today, we celebrate you by graduating each participant. As I call your name, please come up to accept your plaque and the mayor will...
I can start over.
But I thought I did well. Alright, do you want me to start over? Okay, then I'm gonna call the names. Jessica N. Abrams. Vida J. Organiza. Oh, okay. Yvonne M. Blanc. Yvonne M. Blanc. Lisa Ann Butler. Lynn Leonard. Michelle Brickley. Naomi McMillan. Claudia Eras Monday. Anne Mike Monday. Congratulations, everyone. Class number two.
Let me offer my congratulations to you on behalf of the Mayor and City Council as well. Again, we think this is a process to help get people involved in government. We hope that you'll take a look at our different citizens advisories and our other commissions and kind of get involved with the city even more now that you know all about it. Now that you know how the budget operates, you can come and testify on the budget and all of the other things that we do here in city government. And again, congratulations. I want to again acknowledge Chrissy for her hard work in putting this all together. I think it's gonna pay dividends in the long run. So congratulations. We'll ask everybody who is an award recipient to come up. We'll ask the council to come up and we'll get a group shot. You wanna do it over here? Where you wanna bank? No, just yourself. I know where I'm up front. I'm short.
Don't worry, one is one. You wanna come then?
Congratulations again to all the Laurel University graduates. We're happy to have you aboard and the knowledge of wealth. Maybe in a year or two, you'll be running for office one day yourselves. Alright, moving on to agenda item number five, the report of the mayor and city council. I'll start with Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you, much appreciated. On October 3rd, I went down to the county council. They were, had the second and final hearing on Council Resolution 77 that allows for reasonable accommodations for the council members, specifically if they were sick or maternity, maternal leave, things of that nature. Later that day, I went to the swearing-in of Officer Williams, one of the latest officers of Laurel, right here at the swearing-in. On the 4th of October, I went to the Rescue Squad 49. They had their general, their general meeting, so they had their quarterly meeting. And you know, I went that evening to hear some of their concerns and some of the things that they were working on as far as the volunteer rescue squad. On the 5th of October, I went to Grow Your Brand with Google at Venture X in Columbia. I was invited to talk to a lot of different business owners. And the presenter actually had a citation from Mayor Mo. So thank you very much for giving him that citation. On the 6th, I went to Oshalom, Oshalom synagogue right there on Van Duzen. And I attended with Delegate Jazz Lewis. I believe it was, they were celebrating the joy of Torah. And they celebrated with dancing, singing and a reading competition. And it was very well attended. And so I thank Rabbi Adaria for the invite. Memorial service for Marcus, we had Overlook Park that same evening. And that was, that was also very, very well attended. And on the 7th, we had another renaming right here at City Hall. So I attended along with a lot of my other colleagues. And so as you guys walked in, you see that the building has been renamed. Later that, that evening, that Saturday, I went to Company 10. They had their award ceremony. And so they were celebrating, I believe, 121 years. Sunday, 10/8, I went to Glory House Divine Purpose Ministry and attended service with them. It was a pleasure, the fellowship. One of the pastors is actually a resident. And so it was, it was definitely a pleasure to celebrate with them. The last thing was, yesterday, there was a rent stabilization meeting with Councilwoman Crystal Oriata at the county level, just giving updates about the task force and the current ordinance that is in place. And so it was a very well-attended virtual call, but definitely watch out for any other task force meetings. Usually have them about once a month. And just wanted to give the highlight on, on Saturday at the Laurel Library. We'll be working with Community Legal Services, doing a record-clearing clinic as we try to do quarterly. And that would be it. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Mitchell. Next, I will have Councilman DeWalt.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations again to the recipients. October marks Breast Cancer Awareness Month. All during the month, you are urged to wear some sort of pink or some, something that has to do with pink to heighten awareness for this terrible, terrible disease. And hopefully, one day, that it will be cured. I also want to congratulate Len Lucci, who became the chairman of the Labor Code. Len is very, very educated. He's very, he has a lot of different awards and things like that for his being an attorney in the Labor Code. And I think he's gonna do an absolutely fabulous job. On 10/6, I also attended the Marcus Colbert dedication. Marcus was a hero that touched many hearts, not only in the people he worked with in the city, but the citizens of our great city. It happened almost seven years ago where he was killed while doing his service to the community. He will never be forgotten. The same night, I went to the United Methodist Church on 5th and Main. They had an outdoor movie night. It was a Disney movie called Faith in Blue. It was at 5th Street and Main Street in the parking lot. Kudos to Pastor Stan, Sergeant Tony Miskivitch of the Laurel Police Department, and retired PG County Sergeant Greg Schweitzer. Kids had popcorn, candy, and we all did it outside. And it was a beautiful, beautiful night outside. Then the dedication in Municipal Center of Joseph R. Robinson at City Hall. So when you come through those doors, you could see his name just above the doors itself. And one thing I'd like to just mention to everybody, not only was Joe an absolutely great person and his community meant everything to him. He was defined basically by the qualification it takes to become a city councilor or a mayor. And it's a really short sentence. City council members or mayors shall be persons of known integrity, experience and sound judgment. And that, that really defines Joe Robinson. And it was a great honor to him and his family. I attended the Fire Department Company 10 banquet at the American Legion Post 60. You couldn't have a better venue, the American Legion Post 60. And it's amazing when you hear these awards for these firefighters and they're all volunteer. And you, you figure out how many hours they work and they come and they serve our community to keep our citizens safe in event of a fire. You know, they respond to EMS calls too with the ambulances and things like that. And it's just truly amazing when you see how many hours they put into that. And tomorrow, I'm gonna be, from 8 to 10, I'll be at Lars. And Ms. Muton is gonna have a state of the homelessness in Laurel. It should be very, very interesting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Next, we'll have Councilman Cole.
Good evening, everyone. I will keep my report brief. I believe most of us were at many of these events. So I will repeat a report on the ones that have not been said yet. On September the 28th, I attended the Arts Council Traffic Box unveiling. For those that did not see that, the Laurel Arts Council has been working with the city and the State Highway Association to add artwork to our new traffic boxes around town. So instead of having these drab green boxes, we'll have nice artwork from local community members. On September 30th, I attended the Laurel Historical Society's McSiney March and Pound Cake Challenge. I had way too much pound cake, but congratulations to all the winners. On October 3rd, I was here in City Hall for the swearing-in of our new officer, Daven Williams. And then this past Sunday, on the 8th, I attended Faith in Blue with the Laurel Police Department at St. Mark's. Coming up this weekend is Laurel Pride Day from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It is rain or shine. We have our fingers crossed that it will be a weekend much like this past weekend where there's periods with no rain. So we look forward to seeing everyone come out. We have over 50 vendors signed up to attend. For those that would like to volunteer, we are having a meeting tomorrow night virtually at 6:00 p.m. for any Pride members and volunteers. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. Next, I'll have Councilman Sidmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Once again, congratulations to the Citizens Academy. Great job. Looking forward to you guys making the city better as well. Like Councilman Cole, I also attended, like Councilman Mitchell and everyone else, we attended Marcus Colbert's celebration. I just want to say his family was first-class. His mother and his father and his sister, the remarks they said, losing the son. So first-class people. So I don't know Marcus, but I can tell he was raised from a good family. So once again, his family is first-class. Also, on the 7th, the next day, we attended a Joe Robinson ceremony, well, naming the building after him, another first-class family. So you can see, he comes from good stock. Today, myself and Councilmember Smith, we attended firefighting. Prince George County firefighters invited elected officials to come out there and see what they do. So it was very interesting. So we had to use the jaws of life and go into a burning building and go in there and rescue some people. So we actually worked with the firefighters, put all the equipment on, you know, for like almost four hours. I just gotta say this to Councilman Smith though, to put it on record. He challenged me in the maze, right? And I said, man, I don't want to challenge you because I don't know what his sister. So I said, alright, okay. So we did it. And his time was 4 minutes and 48 seconds. I think my time was 2 minutes and 40 seconds.
That's 4 minutes and 14 seconds.
I just wanted to put that on record. Thank you. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Sidmore. I'll go myself, following up with that. Of course, I was there, as he mentioned. And the reason why it took me a little longer, because I'm a financial analyst, I like to analyze everywhere I am. So in the dark, I'm feeling every crack and crevice. I don't know if I need to push something. This guy was a firefighter in the Navy. He served his country. So he knew what to do. But hats off to him for going through there fast. But I was able to attend the Joe Robinson dedication of the renaming of this building. Of course, the Marcus Colbert dedication for the park over at Overlook. And all of those were well-attended. It lets you know what a rich community you have. And I'm proud to be part of that community. And I won't hold you guys up on my report, but I do want to let you guys know, the firefighters, they're looking for people to sign up for. If you're looking for a career change, join the Prince George's County firefighters. And also, if you have time that you feel you need to spare, join the Laurel Volunteer Firefighters. They're looking for people as well. So those are rich communities, a brotherhood, sisterhood, family, I should say, sorry. It's a family in both. And I love what they're about and I see what they do. They have a hard job. And I've seen it firsthand today. That concludes my report. Mr. Mayor?
Keep your day job. You won't get in with that time, believe me. Thank you, Mr. President. Condolences to the family and friends of Larry Todd. Larry is our city solicitor here on the passing of his mother. She was 100 years old. And, but it's never, doesn't matter what age you are, but Larry is with the family, out of state. And we wish him the very best in his family. Get Well wishes go out to Joyce Jackson, who is the Assistant Director in Communications. I did have the opportunity to meet on last, last month, or September the 27th, with the UMS Community Advisory Council at the Laurel Medical Center. Had a great discussion. They want to be more involved with, with the city. They want to spread the word about what is happening there at the hospital and have input back into the community. Actually, former Councilman Fred Smalls is the chair of that committee. And I encourage you to keep an eye out for them. And if they invite the public, participate, I encourage you to do so. That's the way we're gonna keep our hospital as well as keep the hospital growing, the campus there. The last farmer's market of the season was on the 28th. Great opportunity, good time. And appreciate the work that Robert E. and Michelle Blair and all the others, you know, I probably shouldn't have started mentioning names, but there are quite a few. And we wanted to get the farmer's market back. And internally here, the staff took it, ran with it, worked with the Laurel Board of Trade as well. It really made it happen. And we're hopeful that it will continue to grow. And that again, will only grow if we continue to work and purchase items at the, at the market. So again, thank you very much. You did hear about the Arts Council and the traffic boxes. I encourage you to take a look. There's one on Route 1 of Main Street, one there, one into the town center. There's one over at Route 1 at Cherry Lane. And we hopeful there's gonna be some others. It's very creative of what they did, quite frankly. And it's better at looking at those things than looking at those big silver boxes of these boxes. So it really does fit into the community. And I want to thank the Arts Council for taking that and running with that. We did have music at the mansion again, another fine opportunity for, and this was over 21 individuals. I want to thank Park and Recs again. It's at the mansion, Good Mansion. And just a real good time. I also had the opportunity to attend the annual McSiney March. I want to thank them for the work they continue to do in the community and all those that participated. We also continued our participation in the Laurel Walk Day here at City Hall. We probably had 50 people, I think. And I want to thank the police department for making sure nobody got injured. We went from City Hall up to Schweitzer Park and back. And again, just a great opportunity to look at our parks, to exercise, to see what's going on in the community. Marcus Colbert, you heard a lot about Marcus. Marcus is a fine young man. He started out in the city government at Park and Recs and moved to Public Works and was killed in the line of service. As you leave tonight, I encourage you to take a look right out the front door. As you walk out to the left, there is a monument, memorial there for Marcus. Now we have the park and the family. You know, the family was very appreciative. And as we said, we'll continue to show the love for Marcus and his family and make sure, you know, his name is never forgotten. As well, we had the dedication here at the Laurel Municipal Center for former Mayor Joe Robinson, as you can see. I think it's important to point out, the council adopted a... I think it's important to point out, the council adopted a naming policy where certain criteria had to be met. That process was met and it was followed. It's a uniform set of guidelines for naming of city buildings, parks, or other things that people may want to try to put in honor of someone. But the criteria is there, I encourage you to take a look at it, and as well, if you see somebody, or you, excuse me, if you know of somebody that should be recognized, please let us know. The Laurel Volunteer Fire Department had their annual awards banquet, and I want to again thank them for the opportunity to be with them. I am a member, I've got over thirty, almost thirty, I mean forty-some years now with them. Great organization. Brian Cox, who is the Assistant Fire Chief, was named Firefighter of the Year. That is done by the membership, and then the mayor's office receives, and we present the award that night. So well-deserved, fine young man, and as you heard from the council president and others, if you're looking to volunteer, give them a, look at their website and give them a shout. We do have a couple proclamations, Mr. President, we'll post them to save some time here. We do have the Pride Day, which we'll do that day as well, and we have the, I'm sorry, announcements, and then the Board of Trade will again have their council candidates forum right here in the chambers on October the eighteenth. Proclamations for tonight will put on social media. We have a Community Media Day, October the twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, and Economic Community Development Week, October twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, and a few others that we'll put out. Mr. President, so long as you're okay, I've got some appointments. Carrie Advent, Bruce Dotson, Cheryl Dotson, Bridget Ratnam, Helen Woods, Lucy Hegarty, Diane Van Hassel. Those are all for the No Kill Community Animal Shelter, CAC, and we have reappointments of Dave Everett. Dave is in the back. Appreciate you being here tonight, Dave. Thank you for your service with the Tree Board, Don Gravik, and Ed Rowe for the Public Safety and Transportation Committee, and I'd ask for your approval on those appointments. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Rowe. All right. Can someone make a motion?
Yeah, Mr. President, make a motion. Want us people to mail a write-on record of No Kill Animal Shelter and the reappointment to the Tree Board, David Everett, and Public Safety and Transportation Committee, Don Gallett, and Ed Rowe.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. I think that was Councilman Cole.
Hi. Okay. Councilman Cole.
Okay.
Uh, Councilman Sidmore?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes my report.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven. That's the General Public Hearing, and I'll open that at six twenty-nine PM. Just a reminder for the speakers, you have three minutes, and that's the limit for everyone. First, on the sign-up sheet, please just state your name and address for the record, and we'll move forward through that. So the only person I have right now, Madam Clerk, you gave me the list, I have Kate Wright. Would you like to come up and state your name and address for the record, even though I said it?
Green light looks like it's on. So my name is Kate Wright, and I live on First Baptist Lane in Ward Two, and I'd like to discuss Ward Two Parkland. The following information came from the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation, which records deed transfers, and the Prince George's County PG Atlas Program, which has historical satellite imagery. Ward Two active parkland that was first developed prior to nineteen ninety-three, based on satellite imagery, includes the Granville Guti Park, no date of acquisition on file, the Discovery Park, acquired in nineteen sixty-five, the Leo E. Wilson Park, acquired in nineteen eighty-four, the Duney Ho Nye Park in nineteen eighty-five, the Cypress Athletic Field in nineteen eighty-seven, the Mulberry Street Tennis Courts in nineteen ninety-one. And that was it for thirty-two years, until last week, when Ward Two got its first new park dedicated. The Pass of Woodland is only one, the Bear Branch Woodland, acquired in the year two thousand twenty-three years ago. Do you know what else has happened in Ward Two over the past three decades? Colonial States, Conti Crossing, the Crescent to Cherry Lane, Laurel Ridge, Overlook, River Birch, Spring Arbor, Wellington's One, Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven, and the West Side Ridge Communities. Since nineteen ninety-six, more than twelve hundred houses across fifteen communities have been built atop hundreds of acres of woodland, and that's not including two major apartment complexes, the Avalon and the Duval West Side. During this period of explosive growth, the city could have required developers to set aside parkland, but for thirty years, you failed to do so. And it seems you're ready to do that again with the Corridor Center, another development with no public park and no green space, with green space within its densely packed townhomes, only a bit at the periphery. The Ward Two, the parkland Ward Two residents enjoy only exists because of the foresight of not just previous administrations, but entirely previous generations. There are people who were born and raised in the city of Laurel who lived their entire lives in Ward Two, and without seeing a new Ward Two park until just this year. Thirty-two years. But the problem with Ward Two parkland goes beyond the length of time without new parks, but the acreage is shockingly low as well. Discussing that will have to wait until the next council meeting, but until then, I ask you retain that staggering fact, that Ward Two went thirty-two years without active parkland and is twenty-three years ongoing with no new pass of woodland, and likely none ever to be added, while the population has nearly doubled over those same three decades of development. And I find this to be truly unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and is there no one, there's no one else signed up to speak? So I will close the public hearing at six thirty-four, sorry, six thirty-three PM. All right.
Mr. President, I'm going to recuse myself from the chamber. I have a conflict with Agenda Item Number Eight.
All right. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight. Is consideration of a bid recommendation for Carroll Avenue Improvement Engineering Services. Department of Public Works, Derek DeLee, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mayor Mo, and council members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for engineering services for the Carroll Avenue Road Improvement Project. The project encompasses Carroll Avenue, beginning from the westerly side of southbound Washington Boulevard, along Carroll Avenue for its entire length, and ending at westerly, at the westerly side of Seventh Street, also Carroll Avenue from Park Avenue to Nichols Drive. Scope of work, the proposal is to survey, prepare plans, bidding documents, and construction administration services. The proposed work will include field investigation, utility, impact evaluation, right-of-way impact evaluation, replacement of concrete sidewalks, on new, or new sidewalks, curb and gutter, and other items as appropriate. ADA compliant ramps will be designed where required. This proposal is submitted by KCI, excuse me, Technologies, one of the three contracted engineering, city engineering services firms, in the amount of fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Funding for this project is provided through the adopted FY twenty-twenty-four CIP Carroll Avenue Street Improvements. It is recommended that a proposed amount of fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars for engineering services be submitted by KCI Technologies be approved, and if you have any questions, I'm prepared to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek DeLee.
I got a question.
Have Councilman Nicole ask a question for you? I mean, sorry, Councilman DeWalt.
Yes. I hate to sound redundant, but I just want to let everybody know about when a child or a family wants to go to our library from Route One all the way up to Seventh Street, it should be walkable Laurel like we signify it to be, and it's not walkable, because when you read Seventh Street, we don't have a crosswalk to cross over to the library. We do have two of them. One is on Montgomery Street, and one is on one ninety-eight. And if you do the one on one ninety-eight, which is Talbot Avenue, you're taking your life into your hands, especially if you were coming from Laurel Elementary with ten or fifteen children at the time. It would be dangerous. And every time we get an improvement along there, I try to specify, why don't we put a crosswalk on Seventh Street? And especially Carroll Avenue, because Carroll Avenue and Park Avenue both have crosswalk, I mean, have sidewalks that go all the way up to Seventh Street. Now Laurel Avenue doesn't, so you can rule that one out, but we, Carroll Avenue does, and it would come right up, right up from Sixth Street. It would come right up to the Seventh, right by the library. And not only could we put a crosswalk there, we could also, if you haven't seen them in the city, we have speed humps now with a crosswalk going through it. They're very, very effective, plus for the safety of our children, for families that want to walk up to the library and cross across Seventh Street. And I've stood there numerous times, and people do fly down that street, and I get a lot of complaints from the neighbors along there, how fast, because it's a cut-through like a lot of other the cut-thrus that we have in the city of Laurel. And the number-one problem that I get, the number-one concern I get from people is the speed in our city, and this is one of the roads that definitely needs something to happen to it, not only to get the families and the children safe to the library, but also to combat the speed a little bit. And I think one single crosswalk, it would probably cost us about eight thousand dollars somewhere in that neighborhood. I could be wrong, a few dollars here and there. But we also put extra money into these bids, too, which would cover that. And if the, if the company could come out at the exact same time where they're remodeling or redoing the asphalt and everything, I think it would be beneficial to not only everybody that uses that library, the library is absolutely beautiful, and it would attract more people to walk and complete the walking Laurel up to the, up to the library. And I say this every time, that's why I'm saying, I hate to be repetitive all the time, but I think it's very, very necessary that we protect them and we slow that traffic down on Seventh Street.
Are there any other, Councilman Mitchell?
I, of course, love the proposal. My question was, what is the length of the project, and how long they think that the project would take?
Generally, because the weather's pretty good. As soon as we finish our engineering services, then we'll put the bids out for the actual project itself. Hopefully, if we get the project started before the dead of winter, then we don't anticipate the length being very long. I usually like to give ninety to a hundred and twenty days. So once we put the bids and get the proposals back, which is the process, we'll review the proposals, choose the best proposal for the city to start.
Well, thank you, and congrats on the speed bumps. A lot of positive feedback.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. All right, are there any other comments or questions from the council before we move forward? All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
And Mr. President, make a motion to approve a bid eight thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars to KC Technology.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Sidmore?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Uh, no, unless it has a crosswalk from Seventh or along Seventh Street along with a speed hump.
President Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Agenda Item Number Nine is a consideration of fleet acquisition three twenty P backhoe loader. Department of Public Works, Derek DeLee, you have the floor again.
Thank you again, President Smith, Mayor, and council members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for the purchase of a backhoe loader type heavy machinery to replace equipment that has exceeded its lifespan. This equipment comes with updated safety features, will minimize maintenance needs, and enhance productivity on street improvement project. The department solicited quotes from both Sourcewell and from other state and county contracts. The accepted quote is from Jesco Incorporated of Waldorf, Maryland, in the amount of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-six cents, as provided through the Sourcewell contract zero three two one one nine dash JDC. Based on the fleet schedule, this equipment will replace vehicle number eighty-eight, which is a two thousand and four backhoe loader. Funding is provided and available through the adopted FY twenty-twenty-four CIP Fleet Replacement Project. It is recommended to award the purchase of this equipment in the amount of a hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-six cents to Jesco of Waldorf, Maryland, and I'm available for any other questions you may have.
Thank you, Derek DeLee. Are there any comments or questions from the council before we move forward? All right, then I'll enter. I'm sorry. Was that, was that one more, um, count, oh, sorry, all right, well, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve the bid recommend a hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred and sixty, two hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-six cents to Jesco of Waldorf, Maryland.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Sidmore?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Agenda, Agenda Item Number Ten is consideration of fleet acquisition mini rear loader refuse compost truck. Department of Public Works, Derek DeLee, you have the floor again.
Thank you again, Mr. President. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval for the purchase of a mini rear loader refuse truck. This truck will be used to support the increase of residential housing, refuse, and compost pickups. The addition of this truck also allows for flexibility in placing and operation additional crews and routes as services have expanded. The mini refuse trucks are more fuel-efficient, have less environmental impact than their larger versions, and do not require CDL, thus allowing for a larger driver's pool. The department solicited several quotes from both Sourcewell and vendors on state and county contracts. The department received one return quote for immediate availability from TMI Truck and Equipment of Chesapeake, Virginia, who is on Sourcewell contract zero three two one one nine dash JDC in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and eight five thousand five hundred dollars. Funding is available through the adopted twenty-twenty-four CIP. It is recommended to award the purchase of this vehicle in the amount of two hundred and eight thousand five hundred dollars to TMI Truck and Equipment of Chesapeake, Virginia. And the, and Councilmember Cole had asked previously, does the truck have the arm, automatic arm, to lift up our compatible tores? And it does. We checked, we checked, and verified the specification.
That's great. All right, any comments from the council before we move forward?
Yeah, I have a comment. I wasn't here last week for the work session, the emergency, though, but you say you did one bid for this equipment, and for the, I know we normally try to go to an in-state place, I understand, but this was the best bid for this vehicle at the time?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember, and first, Sidmore, for several reasons. One, when we use Sourcewell, Sourcewell is countrywide, so they do all of the competitive bidding and negotiating for the municipalities that use them, and they come in at the lowest price. My, the CA's office has challenged me to make sure that I do that, so we actually monitor and check by calling around and making sure that that price is either competitive or lowest. That's number one. Number two, when we say the only return bid, that means that others may have some compactors on the market, trash trucks, but not what we're looking for in the mini. A lot of times, that requires a separate chassis and a separate back box to put together. They are not always able to do that, or they will make a higher bid based on labor costs because it will require sometimes fourteen to eighteen months just to receive the vehicle that we're looking for. So when they, when they come in and say, we have a vehicle that we can get to you within six weeks, that's a blessing. On this particular vehicle, by going through Sourcewell, we saved eighty-eight thousand dollars for the city.
I know you're on top of your job, sir. Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other comments or questions before we move forward? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve the bid, Derek DeLee, write on record to Truck and, TMI Truck and Equipment of Chesapeake, Virginia.
All right, and can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Sidmore?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilman DeWalt?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Agenda Item Number Eleven is introduction in first public hearing on ordinance number two thousand and eighteen, ordinance of the Mayor City Council of Laurel, Maryland to amend the Unified Land Development Code, Chapter Twenty, Land Development and Subdivision Regulations, to update the design guidelines for the Historic District Commission, and to create for-sale affordable housing section. Derek DeLee, uh, sorry, Derek Love.
He can do it if he wants. Thank you, good evening, Mr. President and council members. I'll briefly go over what I went over in the work session before I use ordinance two thousand and eighteen as required by a city of Laurel code, by legislation to amend the Laurel City Code, Chapter Eleven, Planning and Development, Article Three. to amend the Laurel City Code, Chapter Eleven, Planning and Development, Article Three, Affordable Housing Program, and Unified Land Development Code, Chapter Twenty, Land Development and Subdivision Regulations, Article One, Z. Can you hear Ben? Uh, to amend the Unified Land Development Code, Chapter Twenty, Land Development and Subdivision Regulations, to update the design guidelines for the Historic District Commission, and to create for sale affordable housing section. This is the eighth phase of the code update. The proposed changes would update the fifteen section, fifteen different sections of the Historic District Commission guidelines. At the H E C work session held on September nineteenth, all members present did recommend approval for the proposed H E C guidelines. We're also looking at adding the first for sale affordable housing language into the city code. We understand that with the for sale affordable housing, it's going to be something that's going to have to evolve over time. We'll keep building upon it, looking at other examples throughout the, out the area. We found that various areas, various cities, everybody kind of does it different, so just pull from each of them and to help build that up. But we, we think in time we'll, we'll build a very strong code with that. So overall, there were sixteen sections amended in this update, and thank you, and I'm here for any questions.
Any comments from the council before I open the public hearing?
Yes, I do. Director Love?
Yes.
You say, I'm familiar with the process a little bit though, but can you be more direct? We haven't come up with a number yet. We said for sale affordable housing. We came up with a number, still working it out, what is developed when we get that far?
Uh, what we're looking at right now is to do thirty percent of the, the price, so basically how we were is the price of affordable housing should not be exceed the thirty percent of the median price of each of the similar type. And then we're looking at for as far as the income range to sixty percent of the median income as stated for Prince George's.
Sixty percent, the median income?
Yeah. Well, and that'll be adjusted for the household sizes and so forth. The state works with HUD and puts that out each year.
It's still a work in process, really, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll keep building upon it. I know some jurisdictions will require certain, certain credit scores. They may have individuals actually go through classes, HUD-approved classes and so forth to, to be able to become qualified also for those. So we're constantly, we're working through that and building that.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman DeWalt?
This isn't a question. This is just a little update on this affordable housing that we have in Laurel. I've been a council member for over five years now, going on almost six, and we don't really have an affordable housing. We do have a, a policy on it, and if you don't believe me, I would encourage you to go to our affordable housing section. There's three apartment buildings that participate in it. Call them up, ask them for a one-bedroom efficiency and see what the price is, and it's not affordable. Because as soon as they add a bunch of stuff on to the, the, the main price, it, this has been four or five years ago that I looked into it. It, it was well over two thousand dollars then, so I'm sure that it's gone up a lot more since then. And hopefully with Mr. Love looking into it and getting some other jurisdictions' opinions and stuff like that, hopefully we could have an affordable housing policy that where a person can actually afford to live there. Thank you.
Let me just, one comment to follow up on that. We do have a, a policy since two thousand fifteen, and right now there's over eight, seventy-three units.
I think it'd end up being a sixty-nine or something.
Affordable housing somewhere in that area. Is it the price that everybody wants? Absolutely not. It's, you know, there's a market that we're in, we're in the D C, Baltimore market, which is very costly. But we do have a policy, we do have, you know, like I said, seventy-three units right now. We continue to monitor what they do, and we're hopeful with this, we can do some other affordable housing programs as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments from the council before we?
Mr. President, I have two questions.
Sure.
Director Love, I know you and I have been talking on this. Mr. Taub isn't with us tonight. On the tree portion of the H D C guidelines, I had asked if there was a fine associated with, with somebody removing a large tree without permission. Have you been able to find that yet?
Haven't been able to work that out, talking with, say, Solicitor Taub. Usually when something happens, you have to have an initial warning. What we're doing is trying to work out something, because obviously if someone cuts down a tree, warning's really not going to do much on that. So working that out with him, but I think that's something that actually wouldn't have to be tied to the ordinance, it can be administratively assessed at that point. But I've been talking with him on that, trying to find any sort of leeway on where we can, can work out that and then actually administrate section. It's three point one of the Unified Land Development Code for that fine.
Thank you. And my, my second question, similar with that, on, on fines. One of the things that I like on the H D C is it does remove in these new guidelines any incentive. If you don't have your permit first, you're not able to get your tax rebate. Is there some way for the H D C to go back and force people to change back to something that's approved by H D C, even if they didn't get a permit in the first place?
Absolutely. If something's brought before H D C, so if, if someone, let's say, starts work ahead of time, they're automatically eliminated from being able to do the tax credit because they're going to be under violation. They'll go under usually a stop work order and violations pass that if they don't correct it. And then anything they bring forward, say, the changes that they're making, H D C has the ability to reject those and make them go back to the original, the original look.
And are there any fines associated with that? If, I know they're going to make them go back to what it's supposed to be, but is there any fine for not complying with the H D C guidelines?
Absolutely, that's going against, yeah, they would be going against, so yeah, they would, they would be, they would be put on a certain timetable to, to complete those. And if they move forward or go against that, then yes, we can continue on with those violations.
Thank you, Director Love.
Are there any other comments or questions before I open the general public hearing? I will open the general public hearing at six fifty-two P M, and on my list I have one person signing to speak, Mrs. Kate Wright. Please state your name and address for the record, and please remember you have three minutes. Welcome to the floor again.
So my name is Kate Wright, and again, I live on First Baptist Lane still. The low-income provisions of ordinance twenty eighteen are a good idea that's come about thirty years too late, closing the barn door long after the horses have already escaped. How many undeveloped lots are left that can have a fifty-house community? Only a few come to mind, the corridor center, the lot opposite, the Laurel Hospital, Anderson's Corner, and potentially one or two wooded lots along Conti Road that the city's eager to annex and rezone. The city and its bordering areas are near fully developed. This legislation will provide perhaps forty or fifty low-income homes over the next five to ten years, and then no more. It's commendable they will be deed restricted against rental and kept affordable in perpetuity, but with a city with over sixty-seven hundred single-family and townhomes and thirty years of development, fifty low-income houses is just not enough. What stops a developer from creating multiple subdivisions, not development phases, where each has exactly forty-nine houses, to avoid the effects of this legislation? Because they will, if I can think of it, they could think of it. This legislation mandates that eight percent of homes be allocated to households with an income equivalent to sixty percent of Prince George's County's median household income, which comes to about fifty-four thousand six hundred dollars, based on U S Census data. Although thirty percent of Prince George's County households fall within this income range, the legislation only designates eight percent of the houses. Why not thirty? The developers will tell you that the market isn't interested in small affordable homes, and that measures taken to ensure affordable housing are too steep a burden, but that is a lie. Let me remind you, developers like Polte Homes have proposed absurd things like gigantic three-bedroom townhomes stacked one atop the other, just so they can sell two houses on a single lot. They have no interest in what Laurel residents want or need, only profit. My millennial peers, my friends, my family, and even my coworkers are approaching their forties and still live at home with their parents because they can't afford gigantic half-million-dollar houses that the home developers build, but they would love an affordable house. So it falls to you to represent what your constituents need. Your concern is not the developer's bottom line. Your concern is representing the people who live in this city. You should lower the threshold from fifty houses, or accept that the developers will find a way to get around the legislation. You should increase the percentage of low-income houses per development from eight to thirty to properly represent the constituents that live here, and maybe even be bold and adopt policies similar to Prince George's County's C B zero fifty-two twenty twenty-three, and put an end to the endless suburban sprawl, and instead draft legislation that provides low-income housing through existing properties with things such as rent control and encouraging redevelopment of existing land, instead of continuing to destroy green space for new developments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wright. We have no one else signed up to speak, so I will close the public hearing at six fifty-six P M. And the second public hearing on this with possible action will be at the regular meeting on October twenty-third at six P M. Moving on to agenda item number twelve. Introduction in first public hearing on ordinance number twenty nineteen, and ordinance amending the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for fiscal year July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and to provide an effective date. Director Saylor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mayor Mo, and council members. As we discussed at the October work session, this ordinance increases the general operating budget by thirty thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars for a twenty-five thousand dollar grant awarded to our Economic and Community Development Department, which will use that, those funds for small business training, advertising events, business recruitment. There were also other expenditures through a different grant from the Department of Housing and Community Development, which was used to purchase things for the farmer's market, lot lights at Goody House, and cameras at Public Works. There's also changes to the capital improvement program, savings from Compton Avenue project, which was funded with the ARPA money. The savings were a hundred ninety-six thousand, and those savings are going to be reallocated to update the restrooms at Public Works, additional athletic court resurfacing, additional funds for the Riverfront Park pedestrian bridges, and additional funds for the trash capture technologies for the drain system covers. There's also an additional five hundred sixty-two thousand one hundred forty-six dollars, which was accrued interest from the separate bank account held for the ARPA funds, and that's being added to the Laurel Multi-Service Center renovation at two oh four Fort Mead Road. Also, an additional hundred thousand for the traffic safety enhancement project, and another hundred thousand for the alley improvements project. And those funds came from the savings from the Laurel Avenue project, which was funded by highway user revenue. There's also an infrastructure emergency repair project that's being set up, also from the Laurel Avenue savings. So those total an additional seven hundred sixty-two thousand one hundred forty-six dollars in the capital improvement program. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Director Saylor. I'll, I'll open, if no one signed up to speak on this, I'll open and close the public hearing at six fifty-nine P M. And I'll ask the council if you have any questions or comments on this item?
No.
All right. Well, the second public hearing with possible action will be, will be at the regular meeting on October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. Thank you, Director Saylor. Agenda item number thirteen is the introduction in first public hearing on ordinance number twenty twenty, ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to amend Laurel City Code, Chapter Eighteen, Section Twenty-One, nuisance, and providing for an effective date. Chief Hamel, you have the floor.
Thank you. Mayor, would you like me to agree anything about?
Thank you. So as many of you are probably aware by now, we had early on Monday morning, we had a homicide up on West Side Boulevard. Our victim was a young woman who was attacked and shot to death at, at the scene. Our investigators have been working it since, as well as a number of our officers. They've been working it beyond diligently since that time. In fact, there's, they're still there working it right now. We don't have any updates to release at this time, except that we're hopeful that we can close this, and we ask the community for their help. Anybody that may have seen anything, even though it was very early in the morning, just before five A M, or anybody whose doorbell rang, may have picked something up, we would appreciate them contacting us. And I do want to thank the people that have contacted us. We've received a good amount of camera footage already from them, as well as some statements, so we do appreciate that. If there's no questions about that, I can continue on with ordinance twenty twenty. Thank you. So thank you and good evening, President Smith, Mayor Mo, and City Council members. Before you use ordinance twenty twenty as required by the City of Laurel code, providing for legislation. This ordinance of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland seeks to amend Laurel City Code, Chapter Eighteen, Buildings and Building Regulations, Section Twenty-One, nuisance, and provides for an effective date. Respectfully, we are requesting your favorable review and support to amend Laurel City Code, Chapter Eighteen, Section Twenty-One, titled nuisance, by adding language to the code, expanding certain emergency authority to the chief of police, and noted provisions for implementation of said authority. This adjustment to the code is designed to update this section of the city's code to specifically provide authority under that code that is currently granted only to the director of F M P S, the fire marshal and chief building official. That would go to the chief of police. This would allow the chief the same authority to close a property or business without complying with notification provisions in Chapter B of this code during times where there's an immediate threat to public welfare or public safety. Proposed, proposed provision helps to further enhance the safety and welfare of our community during crises where there is an immediate threat. It is anticipated that this authority would be exercised very judiciously, and only under extreme conditions where the safety and welfare of the public is under immediate grievous threat. Thank you for your kind consideration of this important legislative matter, and we're available for any questions you may have.
Folks, there being no one signed up to speak on this, I'll open and close the public hearing on it at seven oh three P M, and I'll move on to the council and ask if they have any questions or comments on this item. All right, well, seems there's none.
Thank you.
The second public hearing with possible action on this item will be at the regular meeting of the October twenty-third, on October twenty-third at six P M. Our last agenda item is agenda item number fourteen, which is introduction in first public hearing on resolution number nine dash two zero two three, a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland to adopt the Hazard Mitigation Plan of Prince George's County as the city's official plan. Director Cornwell, you have the floor.
Thank you, sorry. Thank you, Mr. President, Mayor, and council members. Resolution number nine dash two zero two three was developed to comply with federal Stafford Act. Development and adoption of the two thousand twenty-three Prince George's County and City of Laurel Hazard Mitigation Plan is a condition for federal grant assistance. Prince George's County Council adopted this plan on September the twelfth. This plan is required to be updated and adopted every five years to align mitigation activities to help reduce the impact of natural disaster to Laurel. Thank you, and I'd be glad to take any questions.
Well, I will open and close the public hearing on this at seven oh four P M, being there's no one signed up to speak, and I will move on to the council and ask if you have any questions or comments on this item.
I got a question, um, it's going well. You said this plan is the same plan as the Prince George's County has. Has this always been that way every five years? Do we copy that plan, or is this, we have our own separate plan? I can't recall.
It's a combination of the plan. So since I've been around, I know this is probably the third time it's been updated. It's been a joint force of the city and the county. So all the municipalities in Prince George's County are included in the plan, but the City of Laurel has to have a bigger piece of the plan, just because we have zoning and some additional things that we do for mitigation. So it allows us then to get federal assistance if we need that, so it is a requirement. But then, because all of the municipalities are included in the county plan, that gives them the availability as well to get federal assistance.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
Are there any other comments?
I think it's also important to say, since, you know, two, two year ago, two years ago, we got the designation for emergency manager and director, as well as our emergency operations center, which there's very few municipalities that have that authority. Again, I think part of this goes hand in hand. We want to make sure our piece is done by us and not by, by others. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any other comments or questions from the council before we move forward on this?
All right, just one, is this, this is the same plan that you had the representative come talk to us about disabilities, right? Just, just one, is this, this is the same plan that you had the representative come talk to us about disabilities, right?
No, sir, we talked about the emergency operations plan. So, two separate plans. The emergency operations plan covers mostly, uh, response and this is strictly to mitigation.
No, I'm good, thanks, Chrissy. Um, I just wanted to announce because we gotta, I'm getting a couple of emails. On December, on October thirty-first Halloween, uh, the official hours for the city will be from six to eight. That's on the thirty, thirty-first, from six to eight, huh? For trick or treating. And we'll put something out as well on that, but wanna make sure you all are.
Is that, is that different?
Well, the second public hearing with possible action on that item will be at the regular meeting on October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three at six PM. Um, and there being no further business to come before the meeting, the council, this meeting's adjourned.